I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome, everybody, to the April 11th regular meeting of the School Board of Education. Please stand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call this evening. Six board directors are at the table and one will be joining us shortly and then we will have a full house. And then just a little bit of change in procedure this evening as is on our agenda. We have somebody in tonight to present on the superintendent's search process. He has a plane to catch, so we will be moving him up first and then we will do open forum in the agenda from that point forward. So I appreciate your flexibility with that. And at this time, I will call Steve Griesbach forward and ask him to give us an update on the process.
Thank you very much. My name is Steve Griesbach. I work for BWP and Associates. We are a search firm that works nationally to place school leaders, more focused, probably more on superintendents than at any other level. And we're very excited to be working with the Prior Lake Savage area schools and the school board to help you identify and hire your next superintendent. We've been busy doing a lot of work initially on the candidate recruitment side, but tonight what I'm going to spend time doing is talking with you a lot about the information that we gathered from your community through focus groups, through interviews with the board, and through your community survey. And I'd like to share with that, that information with you because it's pertinent to the work that you're going to be doing. And I'm going to pull it up right now and work our way through it. I'm not the only one working on this search. I'm aided by some really good colleagues. Dr. Jane Behrens worked in a neighboring school district. She worked in Rosemont, Apple Valley, and there's something else there.
Eagan.
Egan, thank you. Phil Earhart finished his career in Illinois, but he had also been a superintendent in Indiana and Ohio. I was a superintendent in Illinois and Ann Nolan also a colleague with my, it was also in Illinois. Three of us are partners. Jane's an associate with our firm. And so I would like to share with you tonight, the leadership profile that we've developed for your school community and also the data from the survey and also from our interviews with board members as well as with the wider community. So let's start off by telling you about where we're going to end up. The leadership profile is a really important piece because it's unique to your school district and it's based on all the input we got from stakeholders all over your community and your schools. And so it describes the desired characteristics, experiences, skills, personal qualities of your next superintendent. It's based on a lot of data. And so that's from interviews, focus groups, the community survey. All of these things are critical because the only people that really get to hire a superintendent are the elected members of the school board. But as elected members, you want to know what the people who care about your school so much also think because that can guide your decisions. We, as a firm, use it to screen applicants and evaluate candidates. And we want to look and see what's the right fit for you. And the last thing we do is it provides you as guidance in selecting a candidate, provides you a couple of things, some common language. It almost begins and begins to start looking like a rubric that you can score people's responses to and what you read and what you hear from them. And then it provides you with a common language to discuss the candidates. It isn't just who you like, it's how well they fit with what you're looking for. So we're going to start by talking about the data. And then we're going to end up talking about the leadership profile. And the last thing we're going to talk about is a timeline. This process that we're using here is exactly like the process we use with every client. The only thing that's been shortened is probably the application period. And we're not seeing that this is significantly different in terms of the applicant pool from what we saw from other school districts in Minnesota. And so I want to let you know that. Last week, we met with 19 focus groups, had 197 participants in those focus groups. So that was really a very, very strong showing when you get 200 people who give up time to actually meet with us online and talk. And we asked three basic questions. What are the things that you're most proud about? What are the best things about the Prior Lake Savage schools? What are the issues and challenges that you face moving forward? And what are the skills, the experiences, and the personal qualities you think are the next superintendent will need to be successful? Not everyone can participate in a focus group. It just doesn't fit in the schedules. But everyone in your community was invited to participate in a community survey. And you got a great response rate with over, almost 2,000 people participating in that. The survey was available in Spanish and Sam Oak worked with his translators to make certain people who could not access it in English also had the chance to access it using his translating staff. And so I think Sam said roughly about 10% of those people participated and his staff really did a great outreach in that. So what we do is have a lot of information that's coming together. And I'm going to try to put it together for you tonight and synthesize it so you see where it all ends up. These are the focus groups that we met with. And you can see that it included board members. We didn't move you out into a separate group. You've got your own time to meet with the candidates. We had two well-attended community forums and there was a lot of passion in those conversations as there were with all the other groups. So let's take a look at that data from your focus groups. First of all, when we looked at strengths of your communities, we talked a lot about, one of the things that came up a lot was the innovative programs. And today I got a chance to visit some of your schools and, you know, whether every school's got a banner out there about East M. And there's kids company and there's community ed and then there's bridges and then there's the Spanish immersion program. And then really, one of the things that intrigued me the most was kind of the focus in some, in one of the schools, I think it's Jefferson, Jeffers Pond, the environmental ed program, which is really unique and so timely. We also heard that you have a great staff here and I got to meet some of them today. Your facilities are amazing. I've never seen a high school quite like your high school. It's felt warm and inviting and a place that was really attractive to kids. People also talked about the strong reputation of your community and your schools. And so you can see that there's a list, supportive parents and involved parents, all the things you'd like to see in a school district. And those were things that people shared. And when we look at all the comments that we get, we do a frequency distribution of those. And so these were the ones that really shined of all of the ones that we heard. Now, like every school and every community, you've got some challenges. And clearly, these were the ones that seemed to be most important to people in your community, whether it be equity inclusion work or the financial futures. We heard a lot about finances in the school district along with equity and inclusion. We also heard about improving communications. And that wasn't just communications internally with those people who have kids who attend here, but to the wider community and specifically, working more closely with the leaders in other government agencies. And so that was pretty important. And then another piece that came up quite a bit was increasing student achievement. That, you know, some of it can be explained as a result of the interruptions and disruptions of COVID, but some could not be explained that way. And so as you look at how students have performed on your state tests, the trend line speaks for itself and I'm not going to, I'm not the expert on that. We also heard that this has been a tough place for kids and probably for staff members too. And so addressing the social emotional needs of them, their mental health, is also pretty important. And then like every community, and I don't think you're unique, there are oftentimes divisions that are developing in communities around a variety of issues and they seem to be more strident than they've been in the past. And so bridging that and building trust with all stakeholders is pretty important. And so that, those were the challenges that we saw and those were the ones that we heard most frequently from groups. In terms of the qualities we saw from the focus groups and everyone that we interviewed, these were the qualities, the experiences we saw. And you'll see these later on reflected back when we talk about the leadership profile. You know, you want someone who's visible and accessible. They like the fact that people are out in the schools and that they know who the superintendent is, that they're available not only to the people in the schools, but also to your community as well. I think listener and communicator, we heard a lot also, and that's not unusual to hear. I always think those things are two sides of the same coin. You know, you can't be a good communicator if you don't hear what people are asking. And you've got to listen both with your ears and your heart. And then if you do that, then you can better meet their needs and better understand where they're coming from. We also heard the importance of a visionary and inspirational person who's willing to take some risks, someone who can be a unifier and healer. The equity diversity experience was something that people felt would be someone to bring that to your schools and be a real strength. And then once again, the last one I heard, and I talked to some of the mayors of your communities and some of the Chamber of Commerce people and county supervisor, they're really interested in being your good partners and working directly with you. I think the COVID pandemic brought about even a greater need for collaboration in those things because the issues you were experiencing were the same ones they were experiencing. So that was what we heard from focus groups. I'd like to share with you the community survey results and let you know a couple things. This is what it looked like. Seventy-three percent of the people who responded were residents. That doesn't mean that the other people had no connection here. They might have been staff members who worked and don't live in your community. And so they're represented there. Not all of them were parents or parents of kids here either, but almost 87% of them had some connection with the schools, either former students or parents of current students. Employees, only was 22%, which is good. And so, you know, no group had particularly dominance other than the residents and the taxpayers here. And students participated, that was great, and we have a strong volunteer participation there. You know, someone will say, well, you know, every survey, and I'm going to tell you, every survey has errors in it, no matter what you do, no matter how you try to control for it. And so when we look at it, this is a piece of data. This isn't an answer. So for instance, one of the things I noticed right off was that, and this is my math skills going to really work, that there were 10 board members who responded to the survey. And I only count 70 of you here. So someone either, you know, either elevated themselves to board status or they just made a mistake. And that's what happens with survey error.
A restuffed box.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I know. Some of you voted twice. I'm from Chicago, we do that all the time.
I have to be dead first, though.
Yeah, that helps if you're dead. The other thing is you have to also look at it and know that, you know, if you added up all the percentages, it's more than 100% because some people fit into more than one category. You might have children here and also be an employee. So just know that that's, that I'm not, that I didn't not notice that, okay? I think you'll see some real parallels between what we heard from the focus groups and what we saw in the survey. And once again, when you have almost 2,000 respondents there, that's a really nice number because what happens in any kind of survey is that you want to see where kind of the mean is, the median is. So you want to get to that point where you see what the average looks like because that's where the majority of people are. If you only have 20 surveys, they can be skewed by a few people and with strong views. And so when you have that many, it really ends up with a much fairer and better picture of the school district. Some of your strengths are things that you would really like to know and I think you should hear. First of all, you've got excellent teachers and staff and I got to meet so many of them today. Your facilities are remarkable. You have supportive parents. This was kind of an interesting one, number six. Academic achievement was listed as a strength, but it was also listed as a challenge by those people who responded. So once again, I'm just pointing out an inconsistency there. And there's some, there are lots of available resources. Your educational programs are pretty good. You know, all those options that we talked about that kids have to experience in their schools and at the high school and the ways in which you support kids in so many different ways is just awesome. You do have some challenges too. And community relations is one, building on those in an area. And these are listed, you see, these are numbered rather than bulleted because they're listed in the ones that came up most frequently, had the highest percentage. And we will share that, the data with you and we hope that you will consider showing that to your community and putting it up on your website. So community relations is one, and that is not only working with other groups, but also within your whole community. One that is a big deal, I think, is funding. And I think it's, that was the second most important one, in making sure that you can adequately fund your current programs and that may require you to make some, either make, to go out and ask for some more money or make some really tough decisions. Equity was another one, and I know that you've worked on that as, you have an equity statement as well as a policy, and you've really worked on that issue, but it's still there. And that work I don't think ever gets done. I think it's an ongoing thing. Educational programs and options, seen as a positive, seen as a challenge. And technology also was in there. Curriculum might be there because of falling test scores and personnel, I think that's one of those that I can explain. I think you have to tease that one out. Surveys don't always give you the answers, but they give you a place to begin asking the questions. And so there's some of those that I said, I'd like to know more about what you mean by personnel, not enough, the right people? Are we not treating them well? Is it that we're not getting the right kinds of people? I don't have that answer and the survey doesn't have that answer for you. Your next superintendent, we can look at the skills and personal traits that came up most often in those lists. And once again, these should have been numbered because they're in rank order. In terms of skills, there was leadership, communication, really understanding how to work with finances in a school district and really strong interpersonal skills, but also being able to manage. Because if you think about it, leaders not only have to be able to show you where we need to go, but also support and manage an organization that can move it that way. And then, of course, public relations. In terms of personal qualities, I think it'd be, I almost always see this one, we see this all the time, integrity and trust. You've got to have someone you believe is going to do the right things and act the right ways at all times, make good decisions, child-centered. And committed to your school district, to the Prior Lake Savage area schools is critical because we always tell that our goal is to make sure that any candidate comes here, that you will be so in love with that candidate that they want to stay here a minimum of five years. Because I think that that allows you to see the kinds of work they can do, changes, and really lead the strategic work that the board wants to accomplish here. And so when we talk about commitment, we talk candidates, you know, this is not a stepping stone, we don't want to see you do it in two, you know, this isn't for two years, be here for five. And we actually in our, in our contracts with you, said we will guarantee that if they don't stay two years for their own choice or yours, we come back to do it again with only, only for expenses. So it's part of our business model as well. In terms of your next superintendent, I found this really interesting. In 2019, I think you have adopted a really rigorous and well-thought-out strategic plan. And yet this was the experience, they wanted experiences in strategic planning as the number one piece. And so I was kind of thinking about that one today and I said, well, it could be that maybe it's time to do another one, even though three years is kind of quick. Or on the other hand, it could be that that strategic plan is so much a part of your existence in life that you want to make certain that the person honors it to begin with and then understands how much it can drive what you're going to be doing here. And so once again, that's one of those things that we want to talk, that you really want to talk about. We also saw that personnel and human resources was really important. You know, that's some leadership in that area. You know, it's Jim Collins in Good to Great says you've got to have the right people on the bus in the right seats. And that's what a good leader can do there. Prior experience as a superintendent was not as high as the first two, was much lower in fact. And experience as a classroom teacher, we almost always see that. And oftentimes that's driven by the fact that that's the primary work that we do. And being embedded and understanding and being able to work in that environment and be empathetic with what goes on there is critical. And so it's usually not seen as the fourth one on your bullets, it's really seen usually as one or two. So it's interesting that that came at that level. And these were also put in ranked order. So I just want to let you know that, how to read it and interpret it. Before I talk about the leadership profile, are there any questions you want to ask me about the data or anything along those lines?
Right.
I don't think so. Okay. Well, I'm going to do something I almost never do, and that is I'm going to read to you the leadership profile. Because while it's up on the screen and the audience can see it if they've got really good eyes, and I think it's important that you hear the words and think about them. These are not put in any rank order and I'll tell you why. Within the board, you will see some of these as more important to you than others. And when you start talking about candidates, some of your disagreements about who's the right person here may become because you value one of these things so much higher than anybody else, but you'll be able to talk about it. And so know that they're not in an order, but I think you'll see, and I hope that you saw in looking at the data from the focus groups and what ended up in the leadership profile, that they've been thoughtfully integrated into this statement, okay? And so this becomes in our minds, just as it is with us, the rubric from which you evaluate applicants and candidates, develop questions and try to tease out some answers to see what they can do in these areas, okay? The first thing we saw in that leadership profile is a unifier, who can bring a school district and community together, valuing diverse perspectives and making decisions for the good of all students. We know that most communities have diverse opinions all the time. And we used to always say, well, let's figure out what's good for all students. We probably have to have more discussion about that because we may not always agree right now. But this person needs to have those conversations and be able to lead in those if they're going to be a unifier. The second thing we're looking at is a leader with a vision for the future of Prior Lake Savage area schools, who can champion the implementation of goals and action plans. That one is because strategic planning was so high in terms of experiences, you needed to look at that. Where are we going? A relationship builder with integrity and exceptional interpersonal skills. A strong communicator who's committed to listening to all voices, considering their input, making a decision, explaining it to students, staff, and parents and community leaders. So it's not just making a decision, it's being able to communicate that decision. So even those people who don't necessarily agree 100% with it, know that it came from some real thought and I think that's critical. The next one is a leader that is knowledgeable and committed to equity and whose work with diverse populations led to meaningful changes reflected in improving access, inclusion, and excellence for all. You have to talk about excellence with equity because, once again, they're related to one another. You can't have excellence for all if you don't have a chance for everyone to achieve it. And it doesn't mean that you lower standards, it means that you're actually raising standards for everybody through the work that you're doing and giving them the opportunity to achieve at those high levels. And that's what you're looking for. A person who's a collaborator, who values the input of others and builds partnership with community groups and governmental entities. So it's not just about the schools. Think about your superintendent, needs to not only work with the schools, but also with the mayors, with the business communities, with the universities. If you're looking at doing better hiring, what better way to establish a Prior Lake Savage pipeline of the best students coming out of, whether it be any of the schools and the universities here? Knowing that you have some financial challenges ahead of you, looking for someone who's financially savvy, who's got some real acumen about that, who's fiscally responsible, who can lead the school district's work to provide excellent educational programming and facilities within financial resources. We know that there's lots of things we'd all like to do. You know, I once had a school board member tell a group of teachers negotiating, we'd like to give you everything, but we can't afford those things. So let's prioritize what we can do. And that's living within your means. And then finally, an instructional leader who is knowledgeable about effective curriculum and instructional practices. That goes back to that idea of being grounded in the classroom, being grounded in learning. And so those are the pieces that we saw as important in that leadership profile. And one of the things as a board you will discover as you talk about this, when you begin interviewing candidates and you begin deliberating on whether these candidates fit your district, is the degree to which they represent the qualities outlined in the leadership profile. I've got one more slide. Is it time for questions or you want to go on to the last slide? It's, the last one's really not that exciting. It's about timelines.
Well, we can take comments too. Should we save that till after the last slide or do you want me to open for comments and questions?
Whatever you'd like. I serve at the board's pleasure.
Thank you. Does anybody want to say anything at this point or ask? Mary.
Could you explain a little bit more detail how this leadership profile is going to be used going forward? Is this going to be part of the job description? Is this going to be part of our interview criteria?
You know, you already have a job description probably for the superintendent. What we've done is looked at the other qualities and some of these are soft ones that won't show up in a job description. What I see, what we typically do is turn this into a rubric that allows you to then ask questions and those questions should be related to these qualities. And then as you listen, you'll gather evidence from what candidates say and from what you And then we kind of, you give them a number from usually, sometimes it works best, there's lots of different ways to do it. But I always say, use a four-point scale because otherwise everyone lives at, if you have five, everyone lives at three a lot of times. And that way, and then, so if you get down to that point when you're doing some of your deliberations, it helps you really to focus on what you actually heard. So it becomes that tool for, you know, evaluating not only what you hear, but also what their experience has been, what their paperwork has been. You've seen what the community and all the stakeholders feel here. Now you as board members who are representatives of this whole community, you've had all that input on the front side, now you've got to bring it to the forefront and you apply it as you begin interviewing candidates and making a decision.
Other comments or questions?
I, you know, I know the timeline is the timeline and I just was, you know, very pleasantly surprised at the amount of people that participated, the community. I think it goes a long way just for the community as a whole to recognize that there is that much engagement. I think it's important, moving forward, that we've been able to hear from so many different voices. And I think there's things on here that, you know, I think it's good that we can keep that at the forefront because you sometimes, you know, as one, a single person kind of look at things in a singular way. And to be able to kind of really have the voice of the community and just to see all these things, you know, I think it helps, you know, draw that picture together of what really that role is and what needs to be to continue to move the district forward. So I'm just thankful, I appreciate, I know we did a lot of the 19 groups, I mean, I know that was, you know, and that was good because I think that, I mean, and we heard from people that they wanted to be involved. And so I think the community really did get involved and I think to see almost 2,000 survey results is very impressive too. So I'm just thankful for it and I think it's helped me kind of broaden my thoughts, I guess. And so, yeah, I'll be, you know, very thankful going forward that we're able to look at the list and kind of hear the community's voice through it.
One of the things you should also know is that within many of the focus groups, people could self-select themselves in. The community forums were open to anybody. All they needed to do was register. The teaching staff could participate in one of four different focus groups at different times. There's some ones set up for early, elementary, early start, one for late start, middle school staff, high school, and then there was a catch-all. And those were places people could just choose to be a part of those things. And so- And so we'd like to think that lots of people, it took the opportunity to be involved in those.
Well, I think it really came through, so.
Other comments or questions at this point? Jonathan?
Yeah, I'll add my own gratitude to the community for the participation, and to me, that's support of the district and voicing people's interest is, it will be very valuable. For me, I'll go to Mary's question kind of about what is the purpose of this, of the leadership profile. I'll say for me, I like looking through these things because as you discussed it, Steve, being a rubric, I think a lot of us, human nature, when we're meeting someone, when we're doing an interview, there's going to be a tendency to see a lot of surface. Sort of the charisma can have a lot to do with how someone comes across in an interview. And to me, that profile, to be able to go back to that when we're considering what we heard from these candidates in that context, will be very helpful for me in that process, not to say, you know, who had the best smile, it made me feel good, but what did they have to say on these things that our community has told us are priorities?
It also is critical in the discussions you have because it is not unusual for a group of seven to have different opinions about people. And if I have an opinion about somebody or a feeling about them, it's really hard to have a conversation about that. I really like this person. And then you, the question would say, what part of the leadership profile really is driving that? Well, it could be back to charisma piece, if that's all it is. Give me some better evidence than that. And you can, and I would imagine that, that as a board, you're thoughtful enough to challenge each other that way, to go back to that evidence.
The other thing I like is how this gives us a really good template that you talked about for us to ask questions. You know, tell me about your experience in unifying a community and bringing people together, things like that.
Those are similar to the questions that we're already beginning to use when we interview applicants. So it's good.
Any other comments, questions? Enrique, Julie? Okay. I will just add for a moment, as board member, not as chair, my appreciation to the entire community, this was a high level of participation. They rose to the challenge of doing it in a timely fashion. And I don't know if I could have anticipated, I don't, I don't know what I would put if I would have listed what I thought the responses from the community would have been. So what I love is being somewhat surprised and really the way that you integrated several different voices in what you came up with in your results, and then how you wove that into that leadership profile. Because I do, I agree, if we use that as a rubric, if we use that as a way that we're kind of working our way through candidates, it's like having the community with us right there saying, remember, this mattered, this was important. And I think when I picture our next leader, we want a leader who's going to get off on a great foot with the community. And so it's important to match this to whoever's coming in for leadership. So again, my thanks to you, Steve, but also to the entire community for the work you put in and the time you put in.
The next piece we talk about is probably going to be the most difficult for you.
Okay.
Because it's your calendars. You know, we think that we'll be ready to present a slate of candidates as early as next week, a week from tonight. We've got a really good pool of candidates that has not suffered because of the shorter timeline. It's, it looks good. And so we would be prepared to come back to talk to you on either April 18th or 19th to present a slate of candidates to you. That could be four to seven candidates. And then work with you on a workshop that we call kind of effective interviewing. Some of the things you may know, but it's good to have those conversations out front and some strategies to build and develop some consensus. So we'll talk about how to use the leadership profile. So that's the first thing, to see your availability on that. And then April 25th or 26th, you know, if you're going to talk to candidates, you need a minimum of an hour with each candidate. And so depending upon the number, it's, it would be a slog to do four in a night. Two is very doable, three is pushing you a little bit. And so you will probably have somewhere less than seven and somewhere no less than four. So I want to let you know that you probably need two times. And, and, and these are just dates I threw out. So you're going to have to look at it. And you could literally get back to your finalists later that week if you, if you can get to that point. And that would be the time when you're going to actually make a decision about, usually go from, from four to seven, down to two. Sometimes you go to one. If someone just, you know, says, this is exactly what we want to talk about, do another interview, and if they, if that second interview is amazing, you've got all the input from the community, you've got your own thinking, if you've got consensus, you've got the right person, move on from there. If not, do a second. And, and this is a real chance to really spend some time with that candidate. In some places in Minnesota, it's not one of them, there might be a way of having it less formal, but in here, all those interviews take place for the public where they can watch and observe. And so you could conceivably have a new superintendent named by your May 9th board meeting, which would be great if you could work out the contract details and things like that. And so those are proposed dates, and I know that you're going to have to figure those out, and as consultants, we'll work as best we possibly can to come back and meet those timelines. But what do you think?
What's our comfort level with, we can probably do it via email or right after the meeting, but if we look at calendars, what's your comfort level as a board with looking at a timeline like that? One question I did have for Steve is if we move that timeline up. I think applications close on the 15th, is that correct? Do you want to use the line you used with me, that applications close and we're setting up interviews and if somebody fabulous comes in?
Right, right, right. Houdini comes in and magically transforms the whole process. You know, it's, we advertise this as a rolling search.
Right.
Which means that to candidates, that as soon as we get a great pool, we start interviewing and we start talking to them about it. And then because we are, we didn't have the leadership profile presented to you, we've got to go back and look at our notes about those people, even though we kind of had a pretty good idea, because we didn't start interviewing till after the community focus groups of what the community was looking for. And so as you move forward, you know, if we have, well, we might have a slate of candidates, you know, earlier, if the right person walks in and they say, whoa, this guy's, this woman or man or whomever is just someone, we'll bring them forward to you.
Okay. So we're not risking anything there?
You're not risking anything. And the other thing is, is that we are at the point now with terms of recruitment and applications where it's maybe, people who are going to apply have applied already. It's, we're at a drip right now. And I don't think it's going to change. It hasn't changed in, in a week already. So we worked hard early and people have made up their minds, and so.
Yep. And I know there's other searches in the area as well taking place, so that's another thing to consider.
Can we ask the number of applicants?
It seems a 20 right now.
Okay.
We did, and which is a strong number.
It is.
You know, we're not, you know, a longer time, we did another search in another district, and they were only at 23 after eight, nine weeks. So, and that was a whole different time.
So I guess the, two questions we need direction on. One, do we have a comfort level with looking at moving those dates up? And two, can we gather either after the meeting or via email pretty quickly to find calendar dates that match for all of us?
I'd be supportive of moving it forward.
Okay. Other comments?
Also supportive.
Also supportive? Okay.
I'm supportive of getting the April 18th or 19th to get the slate of candidates. The April 25th or 26th for the first round of interviews, I think, is really aggressive. I think that's going to be hard to do, and I prefer to take our time there. So I'm supportive of the calendar, but I would, I would, I would have a leeway there of extending the first round of interviews to be at least a full week and not have the finalists come within just a couple of days later, because I just don't think we're going to be able to do it that quickly, and I don't want to rush that process.
Other comments?
I'm pretty comfortable with the timeline as it stands. I looked back at another district's big timeline from beginning to start of the process. I was trying to get a sense of, are we accelerating? And to me, the left side of that graphic that I was looking at was dates, and the right side of it was all of the different steps. And to me, the important part of the process is that we're not skipping steps. It's not so much when things happened. But even so, we're not far off from beginning to end of where somebody else's search was nearby in terms of the length of time. I feel comfortable with that calendar. I would, I would, I've told my family, this is sort of the month of April is superintendent search, so don't count on me to be around. We're going to have to be pretty flexible.
I could second that he has said that to his family.
Other comments? Julie or Amy?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with the timeline. It's all about the depth of candidates, right, and the slate, and you guys are the experts, and I trust you in that, and your sourcing and your hard work finding people. And then I think as far as interviewing, that's going to be an offline discussion about us finding dates, regardless of when the date is, if it's in a certain week or a different week, it won't be rushed if we can all try and be available and make it happen.
Yeah, I agree with the timeline. I mean, I'll be available.
Okay. Yep. And in terms of thinking through the rushing, or, you know, if it's rushing or not, if you come forward on the 18th or 19th, depending what we get back to you on, to present us a slate, if we approve that slate, then we will find out who those names are. Or if we amend the slate, we'll find out who those names are, and you'll coach us on the interviewing at that point. So really, those candidates won't change. What will change is just how much time we spend doing our interview questions, I would say, to prepare for that and the arrangements to bring those people in.
Yeah, you know, I've given you a very aggressive timeline. And I know that having been a candidate on the other side, you appreciate having it lined up. On the other hand, I also understand that this isn't the only part of your lives, and sometimes it takes a little longer. And I don't think that, you know, if you, if, it's rare that we ever have candidates interviewed as the initial slate of candidates interviewed two days in one week, and then you go to the finalists by the end. Sometimes people like a little bit more time, and it takes a little bit more time to come to, and so if you go a couple more days into the next week, you might still be all hit that, that May 9th or, you know, and what I'm looking for is, as Jonathan said, you know, he's already told his family that April is hiring a superintendent. When we start bleeding to May, he's got a special meeting. They're going to say, that wasn't what we signed up for.
And the board has been good at sending me dates that they do have conflicts. I know we do have a few conflicts the first week of May.
Right.
That are not movable. And so are you comfortable if we touch base either after the meeting or I'll send an email tonight to talk potential dates and availability? And you, I believe, said, it doesn't always have to be an evening, but it depends on what people's, you know, if people are always committed to a job during the day, then obviously we can't all be together for an interview, so.
Can I, I just ask one question. So the April 18th or 19th, the effective interviewing workshop, we'll come out of that with questions, right?
We will give you some sample questions and some ideas. We think that you will, it will generate some questions on your own. And so what we usually recommend is, there's categories, there's buckets that usually the questions, you know, there's going to be a finance question because that was in your leadership profile. There'll be one about equity, there'll be a one about, how do you bring people together? You know, you'll, you'll, you'll be able to word that question. What generally happens is board members get assigned a particular topic to go into that they have a passion about or an interest or expertise. And so we'll provide you with more questions you can ever ask, and then half the time board members use them, and half the time they come up with better ones on their own.
Well, right.
And then we steal them.
Yeah, and I think my only point, just because I've done it once before, is I think people think like you're going to be able to ask all these questions, and you're really not. It's actually not very many questions when you realize that seven people has to ask questions, and if everybody asks two, that's 14 questions, and they need a few minutes in between to answer, it's, the time goes up. So I mean, it's not like you're going to be asking like four of your own, five of your own questions.
Right, usually asking two.
You're asking two generally. So my, my only thought with that is, you know, we'll have to, you'll give us guidance or whatever, we'll have subjects or whatever that people, and we'll, for the most part, I would imagine, leave that night kind of saying, okay, I'm going to talk about finance or I'm going to talk about instruction or whatever. But I don't know how much time, I mean, I'm just thinking, if we want to spread it out a little bit, why couldn't we move up to 25th, 26th type of thing? You know what I mean? Like, you're going to have the slate, so then the people are going to, I don't, I was just trying to gain time that way.
Yeah, well, you know, you absolutely could do whatever, but, you know, if you're going to have, you know, that comes into the issue of whether you're having candidates in person or coming in from, and there may be candidates from out of state who may need to make travel plans and things like that. There may be people with other responsibilities in a school district, and they may have a board meeting that night or a community event they cannot miss. And so we'll work, you can work on it. My bet is that you can, that they can make this work. And, and I'm not certain, you know, that, you know, you're going to figure out what works for you as a group. But you will have lots of time, and even in the questions that you develop, someone may say something, you've got to ask a follow-up. It just begs you to. And it isn't that, everyone will do that, but at one time you'll ask that follow-up, you know, because it's so unique and answer, it's such a unique answer that you need to know more about it before you can, can really understand it. And so, you know, know that that'll happen from time to time. I usually say, you know, most, most answers, we tell people, you've got about three minutes to talk, and if they can't get to the point, in seven minutes, they're never going to get to the point. And, and we also know that interviews sometimes, you know, they can, you'll be good listeners during those interviews, and we'll help you on some of the things to be listening for that leadership profile. And you've all probably done it in your, in your personal lives or professional careers interviewing people. And so all those skills that you have there will really lend itself to doing a great job with this.
Steve, could I just clarify in terms of our scheduling? I've watched some interviews in other districts, and some set a timer, you know, and the candidate has so much time with the board. Does BWP recommend that? And then do we also allow time for the candidate to question the board?
We do. Most times, the questions, you know, have to do with the timeline. And we ask a question, but what's the question you want to ask? Well, we always tell them the time, well, we've already answered our question. When am I going to hear?
Okay.
You know, I think that oftentimes, it's a good thing to allow a candidate to ask a question because it allows you and to then show off a little bit. We always say that, and we'll talk about this next time we meet, you are interviewing and being interviewed at the same time. And anybody who's ever in, looking for a job says, you know, it's the jobs you don't take sometimes which are the best decisions you make. And, and so, you know, in having worked and talked to most of you on the board at some point in time, you know, this is a board that sells itself in lots of ways, and the ways in which you approach things and the kindness you show, not only to others, but also to each other. And I think that'll serve you well.
Would you say like an hour, 90 minutes? You said you can do two comfortably in a?
You know, I always say that it depends on how you feel.
Okay.
You know, for me, an hour is usually right, but some people say an hour and 15 minutes, and an hour and a half might be lengthy.
Good, that'll help us determine.
You know, you have your own experience with interviewing. I know that at some point, there are some interviews I've had where I've hired other people for jobs, principal jobs, teaching jobs, things like that, where after five minutes, after two minutes, I'm done. And I always tell candidates when I do workshops on interviewing, I said, every conversation you have, you're trying to buy another 30 minutes of their interest, 30 seconds of their interest. And if you think about it in those kinds of increments, get right to the point, be specific. It's almost like your, your answers, while they come from the heart, almost need to be like paragraphs with a topic sentence of supporting evidence and a concluding sentence. And and a concluding sentence. And so that's, that's me. And I don't know how you guys are. Maybe revealing too much of myself tonight.
So let me make sure I have clarity. We have consensus that we're comfortable looking at moving the timeline up and that we will take the next 24 hours to figure out how our schedules match and what we're comfortable with for those dates. I will follow up with you, Steve, at that point.
Appreciate that.
Am I getting the direction clear?
Yep.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And thank you very much for the chance to, to see your schools today and to meet some of your staff. And I want to thank also Kristi for all her help and Martha for all their help in, in pulling this together. It's, you know, when, you can't do this as a consultant without people in district doing their work as well. So thank you very much and looking forward to seeing you next week.
Soon, yes. Very good. Have a safe trip back tonight. I hope all goes well with the flight.
I'm sure it will.
Jonathan, could you find Dr. Stallow for me?
That's fine.
Here's the time cards. Waiting just a moment for Dr. Stallow to return.
Thank you again.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate all your time.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is the open forum portion of our meeting. Input from students, staff, and parents and community members and major decisions can be a valuable form of assistance to the board. Open forum is an opportunity to address the board. Individuals who wish to address the board during a business meeting may do so on a topic not on the agenda. At least prior, 10 minutes prior to each meeting, a sign up sheet will be available at the meeting site for individuals to sign up to address the board. Only those whose names and addresses appear on the sign up sheet at the time of the meeting is called to order shall be permitted to address the board. Up to five speakers shall be provided a maximum of three minutes, 15 minutes total to address the board unless an exception is granted by the board chair. Speakers will not be allowed to verbally attack, disparage, or potentially defame individual board members, employees, or students, nor may speakers use vulgar or profane language. Also, speakers may be precluded from disclosing personally identifiable private data regarding employees or students. Speakers unwilling to conform to the rules or time constraints may be told his or her privilege of speaking has ended. Board members, we shall listen respectfully to issues brought to us by the community but not engage the individuals during their time. The board shall not deliberate or take action during the open forum regarding an issue that is presented. If a follow-up by administration is necessary, the chair shall request the superintendent to follow up on that matter. When the board chair proceeds with the meeting, audience comments are no longer in order. However, the board members retain the right to call on district administrators for information to assist the board in its deliberations. Let me make sure I'm all set here. Okay. Tonight, we do have six speakers, not five, but I will use board discretion tonight to allow each speaker to come forward. And our first speaker tonight is Paula Thompson about the EU Expo with electric school buses in Prior Lake. Hey Paula, thanks for coming.
Thanks for having me. My name is Paula Thompson and I've lived in the district about 22 years and I've raised two kids here. I'm a retired physician and I also volunteer now with two groups. One's called the Climate Majority Project and the other's called Interfaith Creation Care South Metro. And we have put together an EV Expo that's coming up at the beginning of May. And we've come before you before, our group has to talk to you about electrical school buses. And electric school buses have been shown to, well, obviously they don't create diesel fumes. And we know diesel fumes harm children. They decrease school performance, they increase asthma, they decrease school attendance, and they actually increase cancer risks. And my husband, Dr. Trahano, actually did a good medical literature search and I think we've sent pretty much all of you detailed information on that. But I wanted to talk to you today just very briefly about what our motivation was. As you know, we work locally to try to do what we can to decrease greenhouse gases. Governor Pallanti signed in 2007 the Bipartisan Next Generation Clean Energy Act. And we were supposed to cut our greenhouse gases by 15% in 2015 and we didn't make that. And our next cutoff is 30% by 2025 and we're not on target to make that. So you've got a lot of parents and grandparents that, in the community that are concerned and they're thinking, what can we do? What's something solid that we could do? So we landed on electric school buses. And with this other group I volunteer with, Interfaith Creation Care, we decided at Shepherd Lake Lutheran Church in Prior Lake that we would have an EV Expo. And it is going so amazingly, I can't believe how much, how wonderfully things are falling in place. We already have 14 electric vehicles that are going to be shown. And we were able to contact with the American Lung Association and they're going to actually bring an electric school bus to the church. And so I'm personally inviting each one of you. It's from noon to 3:00 on Saturday, May 7. And we will have a special place for you. We're actually trying to see if they would give school board members a little trip on the bus, you know, instead of just having it sit out there. So we're hoping that you can make it. I'll, if it's okay, I'll give you a handout about it. And then also, just to let you know too, we have spoken at Jefferson High School and at Rosemont Apple Valley Egan High School about electric school buses. And if any of you have a connection to any student green groups or climate groups or whatever at the high school and you'd want us to come speak, we would love to do that. Oh, oh, okay. And this, this school bus is called the Bluebird. So I hope you can make it there. And is it okay if I give you a handout?
Yes.
Just as an invite?
And I apologize, I didn't forget to mention that our vice chair will mark the three minutes when you have 15 seconds left with the yellow card.
Thank you.
I'm sorry we caught you off guard.
Thank you.
I'm glad I have, I can talk on and on.
No, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And while she's doing that, we'll take the, the next one on the Clean School Bus Rebate Program and that's Daniel Trujano, is that right?
Trahano.
I should know better. Thank you.
My wife, so that was Paula. I'm Paula's husband, Dan. I'm also a family doctor, currently a professor at the University of Minnesota and University of St. Thomas, teaching healthcare economics and finance. We also want to share tonight, I am a volunteer with the Climate Majority Project as well. And we've been doing a lot of research. We want to share the funding opportunity that is now available through the bipartisan infrastructure bill. There is a clean school bus program. It is $5 billion of funding over five years. And what that essentially means is if Minnesota schools apply for that funding this year, which is coming up very quickly, that could be 100 or more free electric school buses in Minnesota available this year and every year for the next five years. But we will only get that money and those free school buses if we get schools to apply for them. And I, I hope you're aware of that. I've sent you two emails already. But, you know, we recommend a number of things, but we have to act quickly. And in that handout, put together sort of the ABCs of what they're telling us at the EPA webinars, what you need to do to prepare. I would access the web, the website of the EPA Clean School Bus Program. Lots of updated information in there. The information is coming up very quickly. I would build a fleet inventory and they have a spreadsheet with all the information of all the buses you need, all the information on the buses that are driving students that you need in order to apply for this program. And you also need to create a, a unique federal identifier in order to apply for these rebates. And the rebates are intended to fund the full cost of electric school buses. And then the last thing is really important. And if we haven't done this, if Schmitty hasn't done this yet, you know, connecting with the electric utility that would power those buses here in, in Prior Lake. I know they, they have an electric bus in Lakeville. I think they, they may have a different utility there. But two things with that, they, that, we need to understand the infrastructure to charge these buses and the utility will do that. But the second part of that is, there is an opportunity, because these buses are now equipped with what they call vehicle to grid, they can actually do two-way power transfer. And like when buses aren't used in the summer, the air conditioners are on, they can actually sell back electricity to the grid and turn those buses into revenue, revenue makers for our, for resources for our schools. So economic benefits are clear. Paula explained the, the health benefits, the academic benefits. We were here before explaining all of that. If you get a free bus, what we're hearing on those webinars in schools that have electric buses, they save $4,000 to $10,000 in cost and maintenance and fuel every year. And if you set it up with the utility, you can sell back that energy when those buses aren't being used in the summer or on vacations and make money to feed our schools and, and our students. So thank you very much. You have my information. Contact us. We're here to help.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time tonight. Okay, next up is Bill Wasney, speaking about STEM.
Hi there. Thank you for your time. My name's Bill Wasney, a parent in Prior Lake here. Yeah, I want to talk about STEM. Just talking nationally first, according to a February 2020 article in USA Today, USA was ranked number 31 in math literacy out of 79 countries. A Forbes article in November 7, 2021, the US has dropped from second to third place in international science and math competitions. Excuse me. The president, President of the Center for Excellence in Education, the CEE, stated, "It's alarming to learn of the US slippage to third place behind China and Russia for performance in international academic Olympians. Now, more than ever, our nation must prioritize rigorous, high-quality STEM education to compete globally in science and technology." Locally, looking at niche.com, Prior Lake has gone from number 10 to number 39 in STEM ranking. That, to me, is unacceptable. We're at a point now searching for a new superintendent where we can make positive change, Prior Lake School District, around STEM. But we need sincere dedication, you know, in our superintendent search and from the board around that. Dr. Stalick has given us a golden opportunity to change direction for the school board in a positive way around STEM. Just some recent, four recent examples, at the school board meeting on February 28, 2022, there's a video at the 50 minute, 28 second mark, there were five goals that were highlighted, reading, math, science, SEL, and equity. So two of those five goals didn't talk about STEM at all. One of them talked about SEL. We hear a lot about that recently. And nothing was said about technology or engineering goals. The eSTEM site on the Prior Lake School website has one sentence on science, technology, engineering, and math, but six paragraphs on environmental education. The STEM part of eSTEM is an afterthought in just about all the Prior Lake webpages. In the Prior Lake American this week, it's kind of fitting, they talked about the robotics team and needing to go to the Minnesota State Senate and, and talk about funding. So to me, again, I think it, it points to a lack of commitment, you know, on our district to the engineering portion of STEM. And then also, we also, Dr. Stalick had given a, an article on, on eSTEM. And I think similar to our eSTEM site on the Prior Lake website, 95% of what was talked about was the environmental side and no science, technology, engineering, or math. So I think in conclusion, as we look to get a new, get a new superintendent, I just want the board to consider that as a high priority for our nation and our community. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming tonight. Next up is Rachel Carlson, talking about communication between parents and administrators in relation to the Gifted and Talented Program. Hi Rachel, thanks for coming.
Hi, I'm Rachel Carlson. I'm here tonight to bring up concerns with communication between the district parents and stakeholders. There were several instances that I believe are rather important and should have complete transparency and community engagement. The first concern I have is earlier, before the beginning of this school year, I had an in-person meeting before the, with Dr. Edwards and Dr. Warner to discuss the support and direction of the Gifted and Talented Program in our district. I was assured that the SAGE Program and other gifted program offerings were not going to be eliminated and that a program review was going to be done. As a member of the PLS MCGT, I was there not only for my own children's benefit, but also as a representative for all the children and parents that look for and have been promised this academic advancement as an option. I was informed that a review would be done that involves staff, children, and parents, and that it should be available around the beginning of 2022. I did reach out to Dr. Edwards in January as our MCGT meeting was canceled due to the move to distance learning and offered to share an update or the results with eager parents and received no response. I have been informed that this review had only involved a few staff and my understanding is that some of those staff have shown minimal support in the growth and frankly, the continuance of our gifted program. I had also received a notice in November that the state MCGT organization had been unsuccessful in receiving updated information on our gifted and talented program in our district and that it had been sent several times to Dr. Warner with no response from her. This is an important opportunity for our SAGE program to be highlighted for people that are looking to move into a district with gifted options. I also want to share that I've been informed by several parents throughout the district that they were offered SAGE gifted options in their neighborhood school without having to move to their child to Westwood Elementary. This is not true. This is absolutely false. The synergy program has been dissolved and the only SAGE program that we have in the district is the SAGE program at Westwood and it is fully immersive. Why are parents being encouraged not to move their children to SAGE Academy? Is this why we only had 20 students this year entering third grade in SAGE? I want to let you know that this type of misinformation leads to mistrust and there are parents that are looking outside of our public schools to get their edu, their children the education that they had been promised here. I also reached out directly to Michael Nelson and the board to request to be involved in the parent leader focus group as a representative of the PLS MCGT. I was not chosen for this group and was told afterward by someone in the group that there were only six people in attendance. As a parent, that gives a lot of what little energy I have left into volunteering and being involved, this is extremely frustrating. And I am beginning to lose what little faith I have left in this district, making equitable decisions that will pull us out of a mess that has been created. Also, allowing school board members to encourage their allies to direct a targeted group of stakeholders to privately contact associates involved in choosing what candidates are right for our district is most likely a violation of board policy. Allowing a former school board candidate to encourage secretive emails to corrupt this neutral and hopeful process is unethical at best. Where's my liaison?
We're at three minutes, I'm sorry.
Why do I have to try to attend these last minute meetings and rearrange my schedule to share my concerns? When are we as parents going to be heard and represented?
Rachel, I need to finish.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I will just clarify that, Rachel, and I'm sorry if I didn't say this in an email, but the parent advisory group was based on board committee, not, which didn't include that one. Lisa Adkinson is up next, speaking about mental health issues.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak on the topic of mental health services in our high school. We are coming out of a two-year pandemic where our children lived through a unique and difficult time, which was the direct result of the guidance from the Center of Disease Control, the CDC. The CDC now recognizes that it wasn't the virus itself that was harmful to our children, but their COVID safe learning policies of masking, social distancing, and school closures has now created a mental health crisis in our schools. has now created a mental health crisis in our schools. Per an April 1st, 2022 article in the Washington Post stating data from, directly from the CDC, 44% of students report persistent feelings of sadness. Nearly 20% report serious considering suicide, and in the past 12, in the past 12 months, and 9% report having attempted suicide. Let me put that into perspective. 9% of our high school population is 242 students who have potentially attempted suicide. This was also validated by the fact that mental health was a common concern brought up in the community forums with BP, with BWP. I heard it in both the forums that I was a part of. I recently inquired with the high school administration and counselors about mental health support for my student, and was surprised to learn that we currently do not have a program in place to support onsite mental health services. With the ESAR funds that we have received and spending particularly earmarked, that were particularly earmarked to support students' mental health, I found that hard to believe. So, I inquired further and learned that we do have one licensed psychologist on staff at the high school. I called her to learn more about her role and set up a time to meet. I learned that while she is a licensed psychologist, her role at the high school is not to meet with the students, but to complete sped paperwork versus actually meeting with the students. She was kind enough to, to offer an open door to my student if needed, and I'm grateful for that. So, as we've received over 4.8 million in COVID relief funds, and 2.6 million of that was earmarked to support mental health for students, my question is, why do we not have a program in place to support, support the immediate mental health needs of our students at the high school? I researched one of our neighboring schools and found that Lakeville School District has a collaborative partnership with a mental health agency offering onsite mental services at the high school. The mental health agency is providing, they provide space within the school building, and they provide similar services offered in their clinic. Therapy services are then billed through the insurance, just as they'd be billed in the clinic. However, assistance is available to the uninsured and the underinsured, ensuring that these services are available to all students. I'm asking the board two things. One, I'd like to, you to evaluate the remainder of the ESAR funds that are budgeted for this year and reallocate some of those funds to support the mental health needs of our students at the high school. And secondly, I'd like you to have a count, your COVID task force evaluate the mental health services that other districts have in place and take immediate action to put a program in place to support our high school students and families in Prior Lake Savage.
Thank you, Lisa, for coming tonight. Okay, up next is Bill Markert on transparency.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bill Markert. I'm a taxpayer in the district. My comments are directed to the voting members of the board. The purpose of me speaking tonight is to ask the board to be transparent to the public and address these two issues for me. First, according to an April 4th article published in the Brainerd Dispatch, the Brainerd School District School Board will be interviewing its initial slate of superintendent candidates in an open setting, meaning the interviews are open for the public to attend at their district office. I'd like the board to please advise whether this district's initial slate of superintendent candidate interviews will also be open to the public. And if the school board will be interviewing the candidates in secret, please advise the public why these interviews will not be open to the public. The second issue I, I'm requesting the board to address is related to the BWP Letter of Understanding. And I've, I've written about this before, but I don't believe I've had an answer yet. The BWP, BWP proposal dated March 14th on page eight gave the option for the board to request BWP to organize a representative community stakeholder group to interview the final candidates. However, in the BWP Letter of Understanding, which the board approved on March 18th, this part of the process was missing. Why did the board choose to forego BWP's offer to organize a representative community stakeholder group to interview the final candidates? I truly hope the board will publicly address these issues. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. I appreciate it. All right, thank you, everybody, for participating, and at this point, we will actually move on to the agenda for the evening, and do I have a motion to accept the agenda as listed?
So made.
By Stacy, do I have a second?
Second.
By Amy. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries 7-0. Next up is the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member requests, in which event the item will be removed as a consent agenda item and addressed. This night's consent agenda includes financials, the check wire transfer dispersment summary, the wire transfer EFT and ACH banking activity, the bank reconciliation statement from February 2022, the monthly wire detail, the monthly health and dental wire detail, the monthly check detail, and the monthly ACH detail. It also includes approval of the school board minutes from the special board meeting on March 14th, the regular board meeting on March 14th, the special board meeting on March 18th, and the study session on March 28th. Personnel items included are candidates for employment, resignations, terminations, and non-renewals as listed, approval of district retirements, and I'm just going to take a moment to recognize some of these long-serving staff quickly in our district. Julie Christensen, speech and language pathologist, has been with us for seven years. Prof. Hidalgo, Hidalgo, the Spanish teacher at the high school, 28 years of service. And Andrea Swanson, a fourth-grade teacher at Westwood, 16 years of service. So, we thank them for their extended time serving the students in our district. Also includes leaves of absence as listed, the stewarder contract approval, and the achievement and integration budget approval. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So made.
By Jonathan, a second?
Second.
Second by Enrique. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries 7-0. Thank you. Next up is the resolution for the acceptance of gifts. Let me just get to the correct page there so I can pull those out. Tonight, we have a resolution accepting donations from Jody Redman from Change the Ark, who volunteered her services to do a school board training and waived the fee. Shakpe Midwakanensu Community provided funding in the form of a discount for the South Suburban Boys Golf Tournament. An anonymous La Ola de Lago family made a donation for the outdoor shed for a physical education department at the school, and the VFW made a donation for the Prior Lake Bass Fishing Team. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution for the acceptance of gifts?
So made.
By Mary, do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Enrique. This is a roll call vote. Any comments or questions first? Okay, Julie.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
Jonathan, that carries 7-0. Thank you very much. Next up is Laker Pride, and I'm turning it over to Dr. Stalow.
Thank you very much. Good evening. It is always a joy to have so many students and so many people, actually, in the room this evening, especially on nights when we're recognizing students. We're thrilled to have some of our MinCap students here who are entrepreneurs and have started their own businesses. With that introduction, I'm going to actually hand it over to MinCap's administrator, Eric Sill, who will say a few things, and then I think the students are going to speak. Is that right? Excellent.
Right here, perfect. Oh, yeah, this is exactly where I'd like to be. For the community members that are joining us or tuning in, I just wanted to tell you what, what MinCaps is. MinCaps is our profession-based immersion program. So, we take juniors and seniors out of the high school and put them in a real-world setting to earn both high school and college credits. It's all about experiential learning. So, I've got three businesses that are here with me today, so I'm going to ask them to join me up front. They look thrilled, by the way. And as I come up, I'm not going to introduce them, because that's what we train them to do. I'm going to have them introduce themselves, and then if you can give the folks who are attending your name in a one-minute elevator speech on what your business does. So, when we talk about experiential learning, what a cool thing, like, these students are learning from experienced customer service, how to build a brand, how to work with maybe difficult team members? I mean, not any of you guys, right? Okay, so I'm going to let, let the students introduce themselves.
So, I'm Anna. I'm a senior at Prior Lake High School, and I have my own clothing brand that I actually just started. So, I've been wanting to start my own brand for a really long time, and I've always been into fashion. So, I figured why not with all the experience I have from MinCap so far? It was just a perfect time to just try something new. So, basically, I just get wholesale items, and I get to be creative with my designs, and I get to market on social media, and I want to own my own brands in the future. So, it's definitely a very good stepping stone into what I have in store for my future.
My name is Grayson Sprunk. I'm a junior at Prior Lake High School, and I'm in the MinCaps program. I've kind of, I'm kind of, always had a little entrepreneur in me, things like selling shoes, anywhere from, yeah, selling shoes to now cleaning boats. I started my business, DACA Detailing, last year, so this is my second year doing it. We cover all kinds of boats and automobiles in the Lake Matonk and Prior Lake area. Last year, we cleaned, I think, over 50 boats and probably 15 cars. So, I really just had a passion for boats, and I've learned a lot, things like selling, marketing, and working with real people, and I think it goes hand in hand with the MinCaps program.
I am Sam Kohler, and I'm also a junior at Prior Lake High School, and I attend the MinCaps program. And these three gentlemen next to me, as long, as well as a bunch of gentlemen back at home, we all started a car detailing company, a little bit of competition with Grayson, but figured out a partnership with that. And we started actually off of the MinCaps to our business project for our entrepreneur course, and because of that, we basically started a little detailing business, and off of that, we're coming around 40 cars and starting to grow social media and learning a bunch of marketing experience through that.
So, I'm Connor Moore. I'm also a junior at Prior Lake High School, and before MinCaps, I kind of had a feeling I wanted to start my own business at some point, but I didn't know how to put all those pieces together, and through MinCaps, they really teach us how to put everything together into one. So, I think they really help you through everything. Like, before going into MinCaps, I'd always ask people for questions if I had one right away, but they really teach you independence. They always say you get into it, or you get out of it what you put into it, and I really found that true, because I went into it not pretty much into it. So, I didn't get much out of it, but now that I've realized that it's really a true statement, I've really started to put more into it, and I'm getting a lot more out.
Great.
Yeah. I'm Josh Clough. I'm a junior at Prior Lake High School, and I've kind of liked businesses and different things like that, and what the experience we've kind of got out of it is, I do a lot of the management side, so making schedules, building the website, and stuff like that. I think it's a really good learning experience, and we got all the tools as well from MinCaps. They have a survey there that we use to put out, to get a bunch of information back about pricing stuff, and that really helped us out with the business. So, I think the MinCaps program really helped us out with that.
My name is Ben Paskanek. I'm also a junior at Prior Lake High School as well as MinCaps. I think these guys pretty much hit it all. It's been a great experience so far, learning from each other, as well as our great staff that we have before us. And it's, it's been a great experience learning all kinds of things, like Josh, Eddie works management. Sam's, I guess, our little president, CEO, as well as Connor. I work more with social media and marketing and things like that, but it's real-world experiences that we're getting here, and it's, I mean, ridiculous, the amount of stuff that we can learn from this, as well as take this into our future.
Thank you so much. Thanks for the, the examples of the amazing work you're doing. You know, in a little bit, we're going to hear a presentation about our work around innovation, and this was a program that we started about seven years ago, and to see where it is now and how it continues to grow. And this is exactly what the vision was. Students using their passions, learning in real-world settings with real people what they love to do and how that's going to help them in the future. You're an amazing example of what we hoped to create, and you're the ones who did it along. Eric, you've done a tremendous job with this program for the past many years, and I know you've got a staff behind you that is supporting these students every single day. So, thank you all very much. Great job. Eric, was there anything else you want to add?
No, I should just add that when I recruited these students, I told them they wouldn't have to talk, so. Future leaders.
Is there a place we can find links to their businesses?
Oh, Instagram. We have an Instagram account, keydetailingkeydetailing.
If we, if we contact MinCaps, can they give us all your links? We will do that then, so not to put you on the spot, but it's hard to hear about it and not want to follow up. Thank you.
You need a D.
She's up ahead. Anna was my mentee last year. Oh, Anna was? Thank you, everybody, for that presentation and sharing what you're learning with us. Next up, we have personnel items, and Jim Quaram, Executive Director of Administrative Services, will be taking us through the next items.
Board members, Board Chair, Superintendent Stalow, it's April, and in April, we bring staffing to you, and so what you have in front of you is about four different personnel items related to staffing and where we are right now. We sort of draw a line in the sand because there's a timeline needed for a lot of these things, and April board meeting is usually, is usually the, the meeting in which it happens. So, the first item resolution, or not a resolution, just the approval, is non-renewal of probationary teachers. Without going into too many details to identify the reason for any individual, a lot of these are long-term or medium-term subs who are filling in for someone. We non-renew those, that's a good chunk of them. Many of them are out-of-field permissions, teachers who were teaching in out-of-field permissions, and that out-of-field permission ends, and we have to post, and so that requires a non-renewal. There is some non-renewals related to reductions in programs, and I'll talk about that in the resolutions going forward of what that looks like. So, there is, there is some FTE in there related to things like Laker Online in the elementary not being there next year, so.
Okay, good.
So, the first one is the approval of the probationary teachers for non-renewal.
All right, let's take a motion and a second first. This is a regular vote, and then see if there's comments or questions. Do I have a motion to accept?
So made.
By Amy, a second?
Second.
A second by Jonathan. Do we have comments or questions on this? And I'll just ask Jim then, this also sometimes includes, like, teachers from La Ola de Lago for licensing. Is that correct?
Not this year.
Not this year, okay.
If you remember from our presentation, we have a cohort, and those teachers are working on their portfolio, which we expect they're going to have done, so we did not bring them forward.
Great. Thank you for that. Yeah, Stacy.
So, Jim, just to kind of go a little deeper on this, so if there's, we end up with more, needing, having more students than what we had planned for, there's potential for, this would be the group of possibly teachers coming back or not?
Could be.
Could be.
Depending upon need. You know, a lot of this, you see a lot of .2 or .15 or .1. It's usually because of licensure, and it's often at the secondary level. So, it's driven by licensure, and that's a portion of someone's, ends up being non-renewed. And so it-
Just because of student count.
Yeah, just because of student count, sectioning, what kids signed up for. Yep.
Okay, great. Any other comments or questions? All right, we've already got a first and second on the table. I'm going to be calling for a vote on approval of the probationary teachers for non-renewal. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries 7-0. Thank you.
The next one is a resolution for reducing and discontinuing programs and positions. As you all know, in February, you always direct us with a resolution to look at that, and in this case, we do have some. One of them, as I mentioned, is the Laker Online at the elementary, that we are not offering next year, so there would be three FTE there. And then, as you might be aware, there was some programmatic scheduling changes at the middle school on electives. We used to require Spanish in sixth grade. We have other languages, three, and so that changed to an elective, and there's way more details than we probably need right here, but- But because of that, there was some reduction. You already approved a retirement in Spanish, so even though there was a reduction, there's just a tiny bit of one. It's only a .1 reduction in Spanish on this resolution. But it is a resolution, so you'll have to take it as such.
Yep, okay, very good. Let's start with a first and a second, and then we'll discuss in roll call. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution reducing and discontinuing programs and positions?
So made.
By Julie, do I have a second? By Jonathan. Any comments or questions? Mary.
The three online, obviously, we're not continuing the online program. Given our openings, are we going to be able to absorb them? Or what was the status with that?
There were two nonrenewes because based upon probationary versus seniority, there was some movement. So on that first list you approved, there were two from Laker Online as the movement happened where two people were nonrenewed. So.
Two out of the three, are we gonna be able to absorb the third then?
Well, I'm talking FTE.
Right.
Positions are different. That's all domino effect, right? So it is possible. We have other hiring and changes that may happen. We'll just have to see how all that pans out. There would be a possibility that we could look at those individuals as coming back. But as of right now, again, we draw a line in the sand, and that's it, right? And we have to act on it.
I understand the contract stuff. I was just wondering if there's an opportunity.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, roll call vote. Jonathan?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Aye, that carries 7-0. Thank you.
And because that .1 in Spanish reduction is a tenured, a continuing contract teacher that's affected, then we'd have to do a resolution of ULA-ing that .1. So unlike everybody else that you approved initially, probationary staff, this is a continuing contract person, so it does need to be named by name, and it's a .1 reduction.
Okay, can I have a motion for the approval of the resolution proposing placement on unrequested leave of absence for the Spanish teacher?
So made.
By Stacy. Do I have a second? A second by Amy. Comments or questions? Okay, roll call vote. Mary?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
Aye, that carries 7-0. Thank you. And then who presents on the resolution designating a third-party administrator? Is that just me, or? Do I just read that? Is it Julie or Jim? I don't want to step on your toes, but I don't want to make you do work you didn't plan on doing.
No, we have, we're gonna have a new provider for, what, Flex and HRA, all of that. It's gonna be a new provider, so we would need a resolution to make that happen.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to pass the resolution designating a third-party administrator and a trustee?
So made.
By Stacy, Mary, second. Any comments or questions? All right, roll call vote. Enrique?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Aye, that carries 7-0. Thank you. All right, we have got no unfinished business this evening. Thank you, Jim, for getting us through all of those. New business tonight. We are talking about strategic direction number three, to expand innovation to improve the learner experience. And are you introducing anything, or should I introduce them?
You can go ahead. Marcus looks like he's coming to the stage.
All right, so Marcus Malazo and Eric Still and Whitney Weber, Weber? Thank you, will be presenting this evening. Thanks for being here.
Members of the school board, Dr. Stallow, good evening. My name is Marcus Malazo. I am the Director of Technology for Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. Joining me this evening is Whitney Weber. She is our Assistant Director of Special Ed. And Eric Still, our MNCAPs coordinator, who you saw and heard from earlier today. And we are here to provide an update on strategic direction number three. Everything we do is based on this framework, and as, I know it's hard to read. I'm sorry for the small font. But what we highlighted there is strategic direction number three, which is expand innovation to improve the learner experience. And that's what we'll be providing an update on this evening. We will be tag teaming this, so you'll see us coming and going from the podium. So I'm gonna hand it over to Whitney.
Good evening. The purpose of our strategic direction, as you can see, was develop a plan to capture the lessons learned during the pandemic, trying to pull some positives out, creating a system to monitor, promote, and oversee innovation to capture what we're doing it and to, where there's little pockets of innovation, to integrate it more broadly and sort of expand what we've learned from this. So there were three specific outcomes that we wanted within our strategic direction group. The first one was just to establish a working definition of innovation that we could use, clearly articulating that to everybody, getting feedback, so that we kind of had the same common ground that we were talking about when we use that word, because it can be really broad. And so, again, being specific to our district and what our goals are, what does innovation mean to us? Completing a thorough review of past initiatives, which will be a foundation for future projects. And we have some information later in our presentation about what that review was. And then collecting and analyzing data on lessons learned using some previous surveys, but then also finding some way to get staff, student, and parent feedback on what some of those things have been and ideas for the future moving forward. Marcus kind of stole my thunder on this one. So there's the three of us, but we've also had the opportunity to talk about some of this work with other learning leaders in the district as well as the teaching and learning TOSSAs. They've been able to give us some feedback, which you'll, again, see later on, what some of the work is that we've been doing. And especially the TOSSAs, they have such a unique opportunity to be directly in classrooms so often. So it was really great to hear from them some of the pockets of innovation that they're seeing that hopefully we can integrate more broadly. Some of the work that we are doing is not in isolation, so we wanted to highlight some of the ways that we're connected to other PDSA teams. One of those is instructional excellence. So using that framework of best practices, strategies, professional development to keep the work ongoing within instruction. Educational equity and excellence. So what I wanted to pull up from this one that goes beyond even that first one is just some of the family engagement strategies, and then, again, highlighting the professional development strategies. ESTEM, our system of ESTEM, to have a common understanding. One of the things that we wanted to highlight with this ESTEM 1-2 is that a lot of times when people hear innovation, they automatically think technology. And you'll see when we talk about our definition that we didn't call that out specifically because it's not always. And there's, you know, low-tech ways that we can get students engaged and be innovative as well. And then the next one is stakeholder engagement. So, again, making sure we get that feedback from the surveys we've already done as well as moving forward, getting some additional information. So this is the definition that we came up with. That was our first outcome that we had. I'm gonna read the definition. Innovation at Prior Lake Savage Area Schools is the practice that leverages creativity to improve operations and instructional methodologies to reach all stakeholders in more effective and exciting ways. So, again, that's the definition that we came up with that we got a lot of feedback on. And it's gone through probably, what, three different iterations before we landed on this one? And, again, it's something that we've been able to share with learning leaders and instructional TOSSAs to get more feedback on, to make sure that it's something that we can all agree to and work with as we move forward. Again, I made that comment about not having it be restricted to technology. And I'm gonna let Eric talk a little bit more.
As we dug into some of this work, we felt it was important to look back at past initiatives, especially because we've had so much turnover within the learning leaders in our district, but also even the school board. There's some things that we have done. It was pre-COVID, if you remember back then. And we also learned in this process that a lot of the innovation work landed on individuals. And so as people left the district, the work sort of went with them. And so that's one area we want to look at, making it a systemic strategy versus landing on one person. If you remember back in 1819, when we did the IDEA doc, so this was a tool we used to acquire innovative mindsets and ideas from the internal staff. And so it allowed our internal employees to contribute ideas that could make and improve Prior Lake Savage Area schools. And what's cool, it was a way for employees to engage with one another, too. So they had the ability to see some of the ideas submitted. You can see that we had great engagement, right? So a lot of comments, a lot of votes on ideas that came up. And they broke it down into small, medium, and large innovative ideas. So the low-hanging fruit, we can execute tomorrow. The other ones require a little more work, right? So it's easy for someone to come up with an idea, but how do you execute an idea is really the challenge that comes with that. From this tool, we then, I remember attending a design thinking workshop. And this is where we really went through some of the ideas that came out of the IDEA doc. And I think one area that we noticed, there was a hole in the execution of these ideas, is making sure that as we acquire all these ideas, how do you build that into your budget request and operational system? So it becomes quickly integrated into standard operations. On the district website, so as we looked at what we tell our community members, our innovative ideas, this is what we tell our community. So, you know, bridges, digital learning, coding, ESTEM, the Fab Lab, gifted and talented programs, the Spanish immersion, MNCAPs, Laker Online, these are all the things that we have created within the district. We also asked our learning leaders, right? So where is innovation occurring within your buildings right now? Because we didn't know. We're not in every single building. And these are some of, I'm not gonna read through all of them, but you can see that innovation is occurring in the district. How do we make sure that everyone's aware of the innovation that's occurring, right? And making that clear to stakeholders that things are continuing despite some of the challenges we've had the last couple of years, right? So we have two slides dedicated to some of those innovative programming.
And then our third deliverable is to collect and analyze data, lessons learned during the pandemic using previous surveys along with the creation of a student, staff, and parent focus groups to gather our feedback. It's a two-part. Part one has been completed. And as you see in our next steps, part two would be that, those focus groups and creating those and gathering feedback. Fortunately, during our tech levy work, we had surveyed a lot of staff and students regarding what went well, what can we improve on. And the following slides, you've seen these before. You've seen these a lot. So I won't read all of these, but I think it's really important to call these out. You know, with the staff surveys that we did, which are the main technology programs or tools that you're using, we see a lot of with internet and creating and editing documents. Also, going back, collaborating with your colleagues, we did that in new and exciting ways, too. We weren't using Google Meet a lot before the pandemic, and we were forced to. I'd rather see people and look into their eyes and see them face-to-face and be here with you tonight. But if we can't, using those tools, it's extremely handy. And it does allow you to collaborate when you're not able to be there in person. So, you know, a lot of lessons came out of the pandemic in being forced to go on the distance learning, and we all lived it together. So we won't rehash all of it this evening, but there are a lot of things that we are trying to pull away and say, these are things that we, whether we were forced to do it or had to do it, were innovative because we needed to be. What aspects of instructional tech could be approved on? Devices for teachers and staff use, student use. The functioning of the apps in our learning management systems or LMS, we saw a huge uptick in usage because, again, we had to, whether that's Seesaw or School G. And then PD is a big piece of it, too, for staff. Couple quotes here. What are some examples of how you use instructional tech and what could be changed or improved upon? I won't read all those, but, again, the one at the bottom is I've been using Google Meet more frequently because we had to. But a lot of new apps and websites that people maybe weren't leveraging or using before came to the forefront. And then having those ability to manage meetings through Seesaw and Google Drive adoption and utilization increased as well. How does tech impact the way you teach and do your job? There's some quotes there as well. We relied on it heavily when we were in distance learning. And what I see as the Director of Technology is a pivot and a paradigm shift as well as how, we'll get to it in a couple of slides, on how we're delivering instruction as well utilizing these tools, which I think is amazing. What worked well and what should we continue to do? I think that's really important as we build this strategic direction number three, innovation out. Additional time for staff to collaborate is huge. More resources. Design lessons based on students' needs and interests. Student engagement is where we want to capture and be. And when students are engaged, they are actively learning. The option for online meetings, again, utilizing those tools to be able to be flexible. The implementation of one-to-one devices. We are, you know, as we are working through that and making devices available, we will do our very best to make sure that we have those tools in the hands of our students to do all these things that we're talking about tonight. Outdoor learning was a big piece of it. We are, I think we are blessed here at Prior Lake Savage Area Schools to have these amazing outdoor learning spaces and watching people utilize those. And it's interesting, too, because it's an opportunity to unplug and get off your devices, too. But I also see examples where kids are taking their iPads to record things and do things. So it's best of both worlds. It's really fun to watch. And then maximizing our LMSs as well. And then quickly with the student surveys, we asked kids, what are you, which devices are you? They were basically using the devices that we provided. You can see that some were provided from with home use as well, or what was available, but mostly iPads and Chromebooks. What do I use these devices for? Again, accessing those LMSs, that's the way that we were interacting in distance learning, using Google Meets and apps and creating documents and accessing the internet. Some quotes from our kiddos. What are some of the ways that iPads and Chromebooks helped you learn? You see those quotes there? What are some examples of how you use your iPad or Chromebook and has changed or improved over the past year? A lot of this was out of necessity, becoming better at using tech because that was our primary tool to, during distance learning. Problem solving, I think a lot of that came out as well as like, because I'm the tech support person in my family by default, right? Mary, you probably are, too, in yours. Because Enrique, maybe a little bit, too? Yep. So it's one of those things like, oh, you have some tech background? I need help on that. So people obviously ask you for that help, family and extended family. But a lot of times, the teachers on the frontline, that's a first stop for tech support, and if they're not physically there. And it's something that kids had to be resilient and say, okay, I need to work through this and problem solve because I don't have somebody immediately in front of me to help me with this question. Using for daily homework and feeling more confident about their abilities and using a device, again, out of necessity, but those are things that we want to capture and build upon. And then, again, what we heard a lot with using the LMS. What worked well during this year and what things should we consider? Flip classroom, and I referenced that a little bit earlier, is where, you know, typical classroom instruction is delivered, you have homework. Well, when you flip that and you give the assignment home through an LMS, and then you have time at school to work on that with your instructor, really powerful. And that is something that we want to continue to work through and work on and keep identifying where that's happening. Flexible learning days, one-to-one device, you know, increased use of tech, open time to meet with the teachers for that additional help. Project-based learning, flexible deadlines, flexible seating, workspace options are all things that were reflections that we heard from our students. Our next steps. Identifying secure, sustainable revenue streams for innovative programming. There's a lot of ways we can do that, and we can get creative, whether it's leveraging one-time dollars, reaching out to businesses, private industry for partnerships, grants, we'll look at everything. We have to. And I think that is an area where we need to dedicate a lot of time, energy, and effort on to secure those revenue streams. Not everything has to have a dollar amount attached to it, but a lot of times when you're spinning these things up or start up, there is dollar money involved, there's costs associated with that. But having those revenue streams identified and built into the budget like what Eric talked about earlier, I think is mission critical. The other piece that we have not done yet that we will continue to, as we do this work, is to create those student, staff, and parent focus groups so that we have that feedback. I was listening to the open forum this evening. Overheard a conversation earlier before the meeting started about eSTEM with the science, technology, engineering, and math. I heard a parent say, and I wasn't eavesdropping, but I overheard it, talking to Eric about, I'd love to see an engineering track at MinCaps. So just put that on Eric's plate. So something to look at. But it's, I mean, that's the type of feedback that, whether it's informal or formal, that we want to get from our stakeholders and say, here's our definition of innovation. Here are some of the revenue streams we have identified. What do you want to see for your students? What do you want to see for your kids? What is the experience you want them to have? And that's work that needs to happen, and then we'll be burning back that information at a later date, okay? Really important, and we had a couple of slides back where we had the learning leaders identify the innovation that they see happening at their sites. I think it's really important to make sure that we continue to enhance the alignment of this work with other PDSA teams. We don't want innovation, it can't be a silo. We don't want innovation saying, well, this is what we're doing, innovative. It has to be embedded in everything we do. And it's really important, I believe, to call that out and see where it fits in with all those other strategic directions. So forgive my clicking, but when we go back to this slide, why, I know it's small, I'm sorry, but we didn't read all these, but we did link where we felt all these other innovative programs that were identified by learning leaders, where those connections are being made. And I think that's really important is that, again, this cannot be done in a silo. We need to make those connections, and we need to do a better job of marketing that and making sure that people know that, hey, we're doing these things, and this is the benefit. This is the value add. Sorry for all my clicking. That was my last point, continuing to showcase what we're doing here at Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. We have a really exciting opportunity. We're going through a website redesign process, and I'm on that. So I will be pushing for ways to showcase these innovative programs and build that into our new design as well. I do have some examples from other districts, and I really like the way that they're calling out their innovative programs and how it all ties into their strategic directions. So I will be an advocate for that during our website redesign.
Questions for the team.
Well, Marcus, since you brought up the website, what's the timeline look for that?
What we say, a launch of MEA.
Okay, cool.
So we're working through the process. I think we just got a first rough draft of the homepage redesign. It's, we had a committee review all the different vendors. Went with Final Site as our vendor of choice. We meet with them weekly. We have, we had our kickoff meeting already. We're in the project phase, you know, of looking at designs and reviewing what the website designers are thinking, what they want our website to, and now it's our opportunity to provide feedback and say, this is what we want our website to look like, and this is what should be included. So the potential launch for the new website would be MEA.
Other questions? Mary.
So Eric, I've given a little bit of feedback on the MinCaps program and obviously been part of it for a long time. The project-based learning there and the natural innovation was huge. But I did talk to you about, and I think other people noticed, that the innovation and the down-to-earth, and as was proven today by the number of businesses that were set up, how that actually was accelerated during COVID because of the use of technology and the independent learning. Could you talk about that a little bit, not to pull you off?
Totally fine. I think what's sort of amazing in the past couple of years is that we, it's very obvious we're living in an innovation era, right? And it's not the era that you and I grew up in. And kids were forced to create opportunities for themselves versus wait for those opportunities to show up. And so you saw that tonight. I mean, they're not going to work at Pomida and stock shelves like I did when I was a junior in high school, right? They're starting their own businesses, and they have the tool, usually in their pocket, to go do these things and access information from literally everywhere. So it's, and, you know, those are just three businesses that I shared with you. There's many, many more. So I could definitely share more examples of that, so.
Well, it was the combination of the technology plus the independent learning that was kind of taking them out of the structured environment. And what I saw, and I believe what other people also saw, was the fact that the projects themselves became much more realistic, much more down-to-earth. And you could also see where everyone in the team was contributing or had to contribute because of the environment, the learning, because of the combination of the in-person and online made them be a little bit more self-aware, which is one of the benefits of the way the project-based learning and the combination with the technology works. You know, I also spent a lot of time at the ALC, and the project-based learning there is phenomenal. I mean, they get a project like creating a, you know, learning about music or creating a guitar, and they have to combine the physics of the guitar. They have to use the technology that's available at the ALC. They have to use the resources in the community because they have to. And they learn every aspect, including of making, of the business of making, designing, the cost, selling it. So it covers all aspects of learning, which is truly phenomenal. And I, of course, went to school in Chicago, and I'm sponsoring two programs like that and with two other districts here in Minnesota that also have an engineering STEM program as part of the MinCaps, their equivalent of MinCaps, et cetera. And know the benefit of that, and I know that, you know, we're on that track, and it's, just want to say that the work you guys are doing there and the work that we've been able to incorporate with the technology has been truly outstanding.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, thank you, all of you. It was a great, thorough presentation, and it's exciting.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, next up in new business is, I believe, Jim and Julie with the medical dental insurance rate recommendation.
Again, annual thing that we come to the board with. And as you saw in the board packet, we are bringing forward a proposal to increase our health insurance premiums by 3% for next year and a 0% increase on dental. We had a pretty good year. One of the things we've been trying to do is to continue to build reserve. So this helps us by going to 3% to continue to build that, so. Bring it forward for you for consideration.
Let's start with a motion. Do I have a motion to approve the medical dental insurance rate recommendation?
So made.
By Stacy, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Enrique. Any comments or questions? All right, and this is just a regular vote, I believe. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That carries 7-0. Thank you. Next up is Laker Online Approval with Dr. Edwards.
So two weeks ago tonight, at our board study session, we had a conversation around a variety of topics related to the budget for the upcoming school year, one of which was the offering, the continuation of offering of Laker Online into next year. And in your board packet was a memo that highlighted the costs associated with that from a staffing perspective and what that, in fact, would allow us to create at the sixth through 12th grade level.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the Laker Online proposal?
So made.
By Julie, do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Mary. Any comments or questions? All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? That carries 7-0. Thank you. Next up, Sam Oak, our Director of Equity and Inclusion, on the annual compliance vote of non-concurrents.
So every year, MDE requires us to take a vote of, through our American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, whether or not they concur with the program offering that we have in our school district. The vote was six to one to vote non-concur for the school year here.
Okay. Do I have a motion? We have to accept the annual compliance vote of non-concurrents.
So made.
By Amy, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Comments or questions?
I think we've been non-con concurrent every year since the requirement was there. What, we were given a list of recommendations last year, and I believe the year before. Is there any opportunity to work on those recommendations so we can become compliant with this?
Yes. At the meeting that we had back in February, I did show them how we addressed some of those recommendations that they've offered. The discussion went on that there were some concerns with programming offerings and timing of when those were offered, that they were still having concerns about. The vote in February actually brought less than half of the parents that have been involved in the APAC committee there. So we actually held off and had some more people, hoping that more people would attend in March to vote again, but we had only a couple of new members show up for that one, too. So we actually talked more about programming, but didn't actually carry out a vote in March. So the vote to stand was six, one there as non-concurrents. Besides for, they will, they will put up, give us a letter detailing some of their concerns in next month. So we will hear more in detail then about some of their concerns with some of our program offerings.
One additional question on that. We still have one person leading it, and that's it with, I believe we have one educator that is actually leading the American Indian program here and the education?
Yes, we still have an American Indian coordinator here. Is that, yes.
Yes, we have one person doing it. I don't think she has any staff.
Yes, just one person.
Does the staff in that program have to be certified?
No.
Okay. Is that position actually funded by the state because of the requirement?
Most of the funding comes from the American Indian Education aid and also the federal dollars that come to finance that position as well.
Okay, was there ever enough? I heard rumblings that there was enough to hire an additional staff member there because I know that that's been their ongoing issue.
The way it's standing, we do not have any additional dollars to hire.
Stacy.
I was just going to ask, the number of times you guys, I know you've had continuing conversations. I know when I was chair last year, we talked about just the number of meetings and being when COVID was, you know, taming down, that there'd be a chance to meet. Are we meeting fairly frequently with them?
We are meeting once a month with them, yes.
Okay, so that's continued, okay.
Are there any, are you done?
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any longer-term ramifications in being non-concurrent?
There is not from MDE.
Okay, but the goal is to work together to be non-concurrent, obviously.
The goal is to work towards concurrency.
Yeah, which we, yeah, okay, thanks.
So we'll get more of a formal letter from them?
Yes, yep. And then after that formal letter, then we have 30 days to respond to that letter.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments or questions? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the annual compliance vote of non-concurrents, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 7-0. Thank you, Sam. Next, we have a few proclamations to celebrate some of our staff in the district. And so you get a break from my voice. Amy Crosby as vice chair is going to read those. The first proclamation is Teacher Appreciation Week.
Whereas teachers make public schools great, and whereas teachers work to open students' minds to ideas, knowledge, and dreams, and whereas teachers keep American democracy alive by laying the foundation for good citizenship, and whereas teachers fill many roles as listeners, explorers, role models, motivators, and mentors, and whereas teachers continue to influence us long after our school days are only memories. Now therefore, we, the School Board of Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, do hereby proclaim the week of May 2nd through 6, 2022, as National Teacher Appreciation Week with the designation of Tuesday, May 3rd, 2022, to be National Teacher Appreciation Day within the PLSAS district. We urge that we observe this day by taking time to recognize and acknowledge the impact of teachers in our lives.
Thank you, and thank you to all of the teachers in our district. You've been amazing. Our next celebration is Child Nutrition Services Week proclamation.
This is timely because I'm getting hungry. Whereas nutritious meals at school are an essential part of the school day, and whereas the staff of the district school meals and nutrition department are committed to providing healthful, nutritious meals to the district's children, and whereas the men and women who prepare and serve school meals help nurture our children through their daily interaction and support, and whereas the week of April 25th through, April 29th, 2022, is Child Nutrition Employee Week. Now therefore, be it resolved that Prior Lake Savage Area School District expresses its deep appreciation to these valuable employees and commends their good work on behalf of children.
Thank you, and thank you again to child nutrition staff. Some of us had the opportunity to work alongside them in the past year and get a better sense of what that work and the love they give the students is. Finally, we have Volunteer Appreciation Week, and I'll let Amy finish up there.
Whereas Volunteer Appreciation Week offers the opportunity to recognize and to thank public school volunteers who contribute unselfishly to the success of PLSAS students, teaching, and support staff in the goals of public education. And whereas parental and community involvement is a significant factor in the quality of our schools and the success of our students. And whereas we appreciate the dedicated volunteers who give their time and talent to assist professional educators and support staff. And whereas volunteers reflect the highest values of our society and become role models for students by demonstrating an interest in education. And whereas volunteers are called upon to assist teachers and staff with the day-to-day activities involved in providing a balanced education for our students and are an important part of a team that strives to ensure that each and every one of our students succeeds. And whereas it is fitting to support the goals of this observance as when parents, schools, and communities work together in preparing today's students for tomorrow's world. Therefore, be it resolved that the School Board recognizes the week of April 18th through 22nd, 2022, as Volunteer Appreciation Week in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools.
Thank you so much to our volunteers as well. We probably have some sitting in the room with us this evening, so thank you very much. Okay, next up is the superintendent evaluation procedure. And basically tonight, just reminding you of where we are at in this process. April 25th, the superintendent will be providing some supporting documents on school district goals to all board members to review. The 26th of April through May 6th, each school board member has an opportunity to review those materials and completes a summative evaluation form and submits it. And from that point forward, the chair and vice chair will create a summative evaluation summary document containing the aggregate scores and comments. The school board chair and vice chair will then, on May 16th, provide the superintendent with a summative evaluation summary document for review. And on May 23rd will be our closed session for the superintendent evaluation meeting. And then we will share that same evening, the evaluation, with Dr. Stallow when she comes back in. So just an update where we are at in the process. It's that time of the year, and we'll be getting materials out to everybody shortly. All right. Next up, we have policy. We have first reading of policies which were introduced to us at the March 28th study session. Those were Policy 407.1, 409, and Policy 620. Any additional comments or questions on those right now? We discussed them earlier, so, okay. There are no second reading of policies, and tonight we have several policies up for approval as listed in your packet. I'll just say the numbers. Policy 407, 412, 504, 506.3, 521, 611, 612, 621.2, 622, 805, 807, and 903. And I would entertain a motion to approve all at once unless you want to take them separately.
I think all at once. We've seen them four times.
Great. Somebody like to make a motion.
I'll make, okay. Well, I was going to say, I'll make a motion to accept all the policies that are on the final read as listed.
Second.
Second.
Second by Enrique. Any comments or questions? Second by Enrique, any comments or questions?
My only comment will be, I think that the student population will be very excited once 504 passes.
I agree, there's some progress changes, yes. And for those listening, these have been through the board now for discussion several times, so that's why we're able to approve them in one vote. So all in favor of approving the policies as listed in your packet, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 7-0, thank you. Do we have a report from the superintendent this evening?
We do, at Prior Lake, thank you. At Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, our mission is to educate all learners to reach their full potential. As contributing and productive members of our ever-changing global community, our collective work is focused on achieving that mission and tonight I'd like to just share a couple things in which we've been engaged along that journey. First of all, congratulations to our robotics team, King Tech, on a very successful season once again. The team finished its regional competitions this weekend at the Minnesota 10,000 Lakes Tournament. Although they did not qualify for the world championship, they ranked 30th out of 189 Minnesota teams and will now go on to compete at the Minnesota State High School League FRC Championship on May 7th at the University of Minnesota. As was mentioned earlier during the open forum, you may have noticed, the team featured on the front page of the Prior Lake American last week. The team testified before a state senate committee on the needs of the robotic resources that would support students going into science and technology fields. So getting students in front of legislators and decision-makers is vital. Also, congratulations are in order for Prior Lake High School Business and Computer Science teacher, Andrew Kukowski, who has been selected to receive the 2022 Best Prep Educator of Excellence Award. With 400 educators participating annually in the best prep, prep programs, the Educator of Excellence Award recognizes the top 2% of those who go above and beyond in their commitment to educating Minnesota's youth. Andrew's participation and dedicated work of the stock market game while also encouraging his students to attend the Minnesota Business Venture has helped him earn this recognition. The best prep program prepares students with business, career, and financial literacy skills through hands-on experiences that inspire success in work and life. They work with companies to bridge the gap between classroom learning and skills utilized in the workplace. That's a theme we have heard throughout the night, that real-world learning. And then lastly, just a reminder about the upcoming Community Coffee and Conversations on Thursday, April 21st. We'll continue that monthly event, which is an opportunity to discuss race and equity in our communities. This month's event is sponsored by the Laker Education Foundation. Director of Equity and Inclusion, Sam Oak, will lead a discussion on how the outreach of the foundation has worked to help the school community close the opportunity and achievement gap and take a closer look at how current practices can even better help all students succeed.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any administrative reports tonight? Okay, board reports, let's start with Bella.
As I'm sure many of you are aware, today was the first day back from spring break. The high school was as happy as we are to be back. We were definitely tired. From a student council perspective, just before winter or spring break, we finished up with our winter dance, so all of our winter dance committees came to a close. Our winter dance was definitely different than it normally is. So normally we have a semi-formal and this year we decided to opt for a informal dance. And so we took our, so we had pushed back this dance a little bit because COVID was so big in February and so we had pushed it to March, which we have never done before with a winter dance. And so we decided to seize that opportunity and call it our March Mad Dance and make the theme Jersey in honor of March Madness. And we did not have, we had about 500 kids attend, which is pretty good for a winter dance, especially when we're trying a new thing. And though that wasn't our highest number yet, pretty much every kid that left the dance said that it was the funnest dance they had ever been to because there weren't a million people there. I heard people saying that it was great because sometimes a million people in a big crowd can induce some anxiety in things and they were like, I just could dance around and have fun. And so despite not having the greatest numbers, I think we all were very proud and happy with the outcome. Closing up our winter committees, now we jump into a spring, which is my favorite time of year for student council because this is kind of the time when our current exec board likes to pass the torch down. So our three main events that will be primarily planned by chairs and other student council members, and we do have other events, but these are our top three, our Surf and Turf Senior Event, and then we also do some Decision Day posts to honor our seniors. So our Surf and Turf event, the date is to be determined currently, but we'll have a movie and food trucks on the turf of the high school at sunset. And then our senior event, I believe is going to be a senior sunset on Decision Day-ish. We don't have school on actual Decision Day, so it's going to be on May 2nd. And then our Decision Day posting, you can all go follow the PL Class of 2022 Instagram to see where our class is headed, whether that's our armed forces, colleges, the workforce, anything. We'll be honoring all of our seniors there. And then finally, the high school has started an ally group called Lakers for Unity, though it's kind of still in the works and we're working out the fine details. It's open to any student at Prior Lake High School and we're very excited to get it started.
Thank you. Other board reports this evening?
Short one.
Yeah.
For me, scale last week, Friday morning, two topics of note, not really directly involving us, but the county assessor was there addressing the letters that we all got over the course of the past month or two that made our eyes pop a little bit and talking about property valuations. And we also had a discussion learning about the, how the redistricting of our state legislative districts took place.
Thank you. Other reports, Stacy?
I attended Friday morning AMSD, Michael, I think was with us, was with me as well. And they had an interesting report from MDE on Minnesota Bold. It's the MDE's initiative behind literacy achievement from birth to grade 12. They're making a big push and have reevaluated a lot of things about literacy and so they're coming forward now, talking to legislatures about funding and things, but they went through an extensive presentation on that, it was interesting. So, anybody else?
I'll just add to AMSD too at the end. Scott Conquist gave a summary of sort of the overview of where the House and the Senate are at with their proposed bills for funding in education. They are miles apart, so it will be exciting to watch how things come together for funding for public education, so.
Back report as well.
Thank you, Enrique.
Certainly. So Southwest Metro, they were recently awarded $270,000 from Scott County's allocation of American Rescue Plan Act dollars. So these funds are going to be used to create a drop-in childcare program at the Dean Lakes Building in Shakopee. So these funds are going to be used to, for building renovations, for equipment, material supplies, and staffing for the first year. And Southwest Metro anticipates that they'll be up and running by the start of the 2022-23 school year. So it's going to be an amazing resource for students, especially the adult basic education and those, those who are participating in college-level courses so they can drop in and they don't have to worry about childcare. It's handled so that they can continue to go to school.
Thank you for that.
Certainly.
Did I miss anybody? Okay, then, at this point, before I take a motion to adjourn, I will say that following adjournment, the board will be going into closed session. The meeting will be closed in accordance with the open meeting law, Minnesota Statute 13D.03, for the purpose of discussing negotiation strategy. Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So made.
By Stacy, do I have a second?
Second.
Amy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? That carries 7-0. Thank you. Have a good rest tonight.